That is a sense. Why you say that?
I fight with the regents. It's a flag. You can say state or American. And two to the public, which is things on nation, on the ground, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
And so hey, for sure, Bill, Public Reading Act, reading at the Senate, and some third time during by the screening, as well as face closely the municipal reality on the town, when you say you. This is me, Ted Wong, please.
Mr. Gattano?
Here.
Mr. Leo? Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Galataro?
Here.
Mr. DeSasri?
Here.
Mr. Hagle? Mr. Felici? Mr. Emblasis?
Here.
Chairman Greve.
Here. Okay, they actually, so, yeah, Mr. Leo, this is your seat of honor, the, the, um, the, so you're 12.
What?
Got it. All right, that's what they just need. Call, please. I make them go to their furrows. Was your idea, the surgery? And I could buy this. So, that's why I said, I mean, uh, from this. That could. It looks like.
The.
Well, I second that, my, uh, that way. A whole long behavior, I suppose, should I met, I have been, uh, was due, it didn't reach, and see. And, gee, judgment, I mean. You know, so virtual bases and, and that, that, um. Look. Okay, we have two applications on the agenda, the scene hanging down. Uh, bigger, uh, sweater, but dig this, uh, Fitz Angeles first, so that's in tickets, but night. Say their body, just, mackin. List of botanical farms. The strange list, please, go forward. Like everything works? Yes. Be. So you, with the.
Charlie?
Rachel, again, please, tell truth, when you're here.
Absolutely. You definitely.
You know, how does for that?
Vince Angeles, Jr., eight, six, two, Salem Ave.
The tenants. Watch respect, what would you, uh, screw drop for you?
Um, application is to put two additions on either side of the house and one for the front dwelling to enlarge the entrance to the house. When you open the door, it's a knuckle buster. Uh, the additions would be twenty-three by fifteen on both sides. Uh, we're not adding any bathrooms, we're not adding any bedrooms, we're just enlarging the space of the children's bedrooms, and we're making a great room.
Then all we need is a courage to the fight day? Do my kind?
Looks like it. Can you cut?
You want to hear out on that?
Well, that's what we need to hear, so have some testimony on. It's not clear on the application board, the documents that were submitted about the size of this addition in the front.
I resent that back in, I resubmit the application in with the dimensions on it, on a drawing. So I sent that back in, I believe it was eight by eight from the front.
I've heard you have seen that all.
I sent that back in at a later date.
So the front addition is going to be eight by eight?
Yes.
Can you clarify the side additions? The documents that were submitted said twenty-eight by fifteen?
Twenty-eight by fifteen, so we don't have to remove the electrical, and the other side is twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, I thought you said twenty-three by.
The other side, I believe, is twenty-three because we can, are not going to move the electrical boxes, so it's going to be shorter by about five feet. So the left-hand side of the house is twenty-three by fifteen. The right side of the house should be twenty-eight by fifteens.
Also, size the side of the lot. In.
Yeah, so, um, we did a report dated July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, which we recommend the application be deemed complete. This is in the Pineland Rural Residential District, which requires a three-point-four acre parcel. This lot is an existing undersized parcel of one-point-oh-eight-one acres, so it's an existing, like I said, existing undersized lot. Um, it appears that the only variance required is front yard setback. Uh, it's marked on the plan, forty-one-point-two feet is the requested front yard setback. In this zone, you have to be at least fifty feet. So that's kind of what we're up against. Pretty straightforward.
I think you should adjust the variance for the size of the lot as well. If you have an undersized lot, they will increase the house and the lot. Then it requires a variance for this undersized. Um, that is pre-existing on the reports, but I think you should be addressed so they ask complete, uh, deciding. So do you scope variance?
So let, let's go back. Um, it's marked on the plan that the front yard setback is going to be forty-one-point-two feet. But in light of the testimony that it's going to be an eight-foot by eight-foot addition, actually, the front yard setback is forty-seven-point-four, much closer to the fifty feet that's required. That, that's why I had some.
Okay.
Forty-seven-point-four is requested, fifty foot is required. And the undersized lot. And did you say one of the, will one of the additions be a bedroom?
No, they're just enlarging the current existing bedrooms, no bath, uh, we're not changing the septic, we don't want to mess with that.
But I did. Did you make any attempts to purchase additional area to make the parcel conform?
All letters were sent out as requested.
Yes, they will.
Could I say that, Mike?
The, uh, request by joining property owners for additional land or purchase, it were set, and the responses were submitted. Just the two variances.
Okay. Any questions? Come over, let's, uh, make the most we open, uh, but. Which my data setting, the surgery, don't even, uh, look at your second, well, it's like, if you said, like, rich places, all in favor, I, of course, got, is there, is there any more to cover, like, should be heard regarding this application? I mean, like, we could, it's all unfortunate. Much close. Then I.
Go a second.
Second, like, my brother, full of all favor, chaotic coach. Okay. I make a motion, we've looked at two varying for, I'm inside, uh, lot, and it is plain. And second, that's. Looked the boys, so they need to, to the second green.
They say goodbye to. Mr. Gattano?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Galataro?
Yes.
Mr. DeSasri? Mr. Emblasis?
Yes.
Chair for Greve?
Yes.
Give us a, that can approve.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the botanical farm itself, LLC, invite to the very corner?
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman Greve, and gentlemen of the board. I'm hoping our application will be as, uh, quick and straightforward as that one. So, maybe, maybe. Um, anyway, this is a use variance application, uh, to, for class one cannabis cultivation, uh, eighteen-thirteen Dutch Mill Road. It's a farm of about eighteen acres. It's in the PRR zoning, Pinelands Rural Residential, and the proposal is for a company, an LLC called Mystic Botanical LLC, which we have, uh, the two majority members of that company here today, and we also have one minority member who's also the property owner. And, uh, they're here to testify that this should be approved based on the criteria set forth by the state of New Jersey. Uh, basically, that it meets the positive branch of the two-pronged use variance in that it is inherently beneficial, but also that this property is particularly suited for this purpose. And as far as the negative, the detriment, uh, branch, we will, they will testify that this, uh, should not negatively impact the zoning because it continues to encourage open space, it continues to encourage farming, uh, which are critical parts of, of the zoning ordinances and the, uh, purpose for the zoning ordinances. And they will also show that, um, any concern related to the scent will be mitigated. This is a very small, and it's limited, uh, by the state to the ten thousand square feet that they're applying, applying for. I believe initially their plan is to start with five thousand square feet and then expand to ten. But it is a, um, small cannabis growth operation, outdoor, uh, the only real, the only real changes to the site itself would be the fences required by the state. They already have their, um, preliminary license from the state for this operation, and it requires two eight-foot chain-link fences and certain security measures, which are all part of the application that was submitted. So, I know there, every time there's been a cannabis variance, there's been a large turnout. And, you know, I myself have been in the audience before to oppose certain cannabis operations based on, you know, the operation and the location. And in this case, this is very much a different application from those applications. This is not, like I said, a manufacturing facility, this is not a processing facility, it's literally ten thousand square feet of growth, which would then be freeze-dried and shipped off. So the, the, uh, amount is very small, where it's situated on the farm, there are no close neighbors, uh, and basically the freeze-dried process would prevent the majority of the odor, but there are several other steps that can be taken if it does become a problem. And my clients have gone out and spoken to all their neighbors, um, to make sure that they're comfortable with this. So, uh, it's a good fit, it's unobtrusive, it's safe, and, you know, we have this board to make important decisions like this. And it doesn't mean that if this one is approved, that every operation related to marijuana will be approved in the township. It's a individual application, and, you know, I'm a big believer in landowners doing what they want on their own property with minimal government intrusion. And in this case, the owners have tried to plan and factor, uh, basically every possible measure to protect the quality of, of life and frankly township around them for themselves, their family members, frankly township residents, and just as an aside, there is a two percent tax available to the township on all cannabis products produced.
So.
The owners are going to testify?
The owner's going to testify first, which is, uh, William J. Pfeifer, and then Sergeant James Will and William L. Pfeifer, all here to testify today.
Why are we swearing then?
Come on up.
Say, Greg, and King, swear, tell truth, that's what I'm going to do.
Yes.
You try, you may have yours for records.
I'm William J. Pfeifer.
Address.
Eighteen-thirteen Dutch Mill Road.
William L. Pfeifer, Seven Hillside Road, West Deford, but I grew up here in the township.
I think I.
Master Sergeant Jim Wilt, United States Army, retired. Uh, I live at six-two-three Vassar Road, Winona, New Jersey, oh-eight-oh-nine-oh.
Okay. Back you.
Thank you. And I'd like to, uh, call Mr. William J. Pfeifer first.
Say my name and stuff.
Yeah, can you, I think you just put your name and address on the record, but I, you're the owner of the, uh, property at eighteen-thirteen Dutch Mill Road, correct?
Yes.
And you're the only owner of that property?
Correct.
And you're also a minority member of Mystic Botanical LLC, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you are supportive of this application for use variance, correct?
Yes.
And how long have you lived on the farm at eighteen-thirteen Dutch Mill Road?
Since nineteen sixty.
In fact, you, uh, grew up there?
Yes.
Went to Delsey?
Yes.
Played on part of the famous football team that won two state championships in a row?
Yes.
Tight end, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, what do you currently farm on this property?
Uh, cattle, horses, and chickens.
And is it, uh, farmland assessed except for the house and one acre?
Yes.
Okay. And you understand that the portion that would be used for cultivation would no longer be farmland assessed once it's transferred to that use, right?
Yes.
And, uh, is it your intent to continue using the rest of the farm for conventional farm products?
Yes.
Okay. You can elaborate if you want, but, um, and is it your intent to also continue living in the residence?
Yes.
And why are you supporting this application?
Well, everything we tried to do farming, whether it was cattle, horses, chickens, um, grain crops, you, just not, it's too hard to make it. I mean, the cattle market goes up and down, uh, the grain market goes up and down, um, so we were just looking for something to help pay for everything.
So that your son can continue the tradition?
He, all of a sudden, really wants to get into farming and plant other things and whatnot, we looked into grapes and stuff, so this was a start.
But this is an eighteen acre, it's a relatively small farm, correct?
Yeah.
And, uh, you have not been successful as of yet in, in getting anywhere with farmland preservation, correct?
No.
And, uh, the, in fact, the size of this farm has always required you to have outside employment, correct?
Yes, I, I got a regular job, always had to. Um, like I said, the market goes up and down with cattle, and, like, right now, it real high. That don't mean in six months, they might be real low, and it's just hard, hard to make it.
In fact, uh, you've worked as a professional steer breastler, correct?
Yes.
You were the.
Forty, forty years of cowtown.
And you were the first frontier circuit champion, right?
Yes.
And in fact, you were one of the four Central Park horsemen in the movie Elf?
Yes, that's true.
All from, all from, uh, what transpired on this farm?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, that, wha, tell us what the purpose of that fenced area inside which the new fenced area is going to be put? Uh, what was the purpose of that fenced area when you fenced it?
That was our arena for years, where we practiced, um, so now a parcel of that is going to become, if this is approved, part of, uh, what he's trying to do.
Now, uh, going back to your high school football career for a minute, um, is it correct to say a football field's about a hundred and sixty feet wide?
Yes.
And the end zone's about ten yards or thirty feet deep?
Correct.
So if you put the two end zones, just the two end zones together, you'd have ninety-six-hundred square feet?
Right.
Which is about the same size as this proposed cultivation?
Right, it's not very big.
Okay. Do you have any, uh, questions for Mr. Pfeifer?
You, you said that's as, as big as they're allowed to make?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what this.
All you can add is ten thousand square feet?
For this, for this particular class and outside, yes, it's limited to ten thousand. And they, um, I believe there would have to be a whole separate application if they wanted to do anything different from that, I don't mean zoning, I mean with the state.
Like, it's not very big.
Uh, is open question?
Yes.
So right now, you're living there and it's associated with the cannabis, so in the future, if you were to move or leave, it's just going to have to go together, and if somebody has to have the residents out on the campus?
Well, it's already, um, well to my son. Okay? I don't plan on going anywhere because the way I figure, everything is paid for now, and there's nowhere in the world you can live for five hundred a month. You know what I mean, getting social security, you know, I mean, that's all my taxes would be, so.
But I believe it is just one block and lot, one parcel at this point.
At some point, you know, if you wasn't living there, that's going to have to all go together.
Uh, unless.
If someone were to buy it, they wouldn't.
They would buy the house too, but unless, unless they go forward with a subdivision, I believe that's, it's all one parcel.
And then, if there were new people to buy it, you have to get it through by the state that operates.
They would have to get a license, absolutely. And, uh, any license, I believe part of the final license is getting a letter from the township recommending it. So there's, um, there's two ways that the township can restrict it, even once this variance is granted, if it's granted. And one would be not writing the letter if, if a new applicant applied, even for the same parcel. And the second would be every five years, the, uh, township, now this wouldn't be for this particular, uh, company, but the township has the right to restrict any new, um, cannabis operations, the same way this time around, they restricted, I believe, distribution and retail. So they would have the right, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, Michael, you might, I know this better, but I believe that would restrict any new applications as opposed to, like, I don't believe this would be grandfathered if that were the case. I believe it would be grandfathered to itself, but I don't believe it would be automatically for the next applicant to get their license, if that makes sense.
What's, what's the growing chief?
We will answer all those questions. Uh, this Bill Pfeifer is not the expert on, uh, the actual cannabis operation, but we will, uh, address all that with the other two, uh, witnesses. I can answer, but it probably went the accurate, as accurate.
Are you done?
There's Mike.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'd like to call Sergeant James Wilt. And I'm going to try to get the computer back on the screen, if this.
Good evening, everybody.
Now, good. And will you be in there? Keep. Talking to the side, bar, the, yes, though, yes.
First.
Good.
Do you, do you?
It, you, of course, it's legal, it's common.
Now, I know that's a little bit small, so people may need to come closer to, uh, see what's going on there, and if you want to, you know, go closer to the screen to point to, you're more than welcome to. And, uh, you've already been sworn in, and can you, uh, tell the board a little bit about yourself and how you got involved in this project?
Absolutely. So, I am a medically retired, uh, combat-disabled veteran. I cut my teeth in the eighty-second airborne, I did Iraq twice, Afghanistan once. Upon my last return from Iraq, I'll be honest, you don't see it yourself, you don't. I had serious issues. I'll be real with you right now. My beautiful daughter's in the office, or in the office in the room, she almost didn't have a dad. This stuff is serious. And you know what changed my life? A buddy called me and said, have you tried cannabis? I didn't sleep for ten to fifteen years. Like, it just didn't happen, night sweats, screaming. My children's mother, as well as another young lady, they would freak out at night because I would wake up, freak out, and clear my entire house with a gun. I have not done that since I have started using cannabis. And you're going to hear other testimony tonight from vets about the same issue. I hear every day from my friends, from family, from random strangers, I want to help veterans, I want to help veterans, I want to help veterans. And it's always talk. I said it, I want to help veterans, and this opportunity came up, so I'm going to do the right thing, and I'm going to help my brothers and sisters in arms. Because at the end of the day, we have twenty-two veterans killing themselves a day, I've known some of that. It's one thing when I buried my friends from combat, who died in combat, I understand that. Having veterans kill themselves, there's no reason for it. You know, I'm treated by the VA, I take, uh, significant amount of medication every day to help. While I was in the Department of Defense still, still in the service, I was actually prescribed Marinol, which is synthetic THC. Because they were desperate to try anything, and it helped. Like, these things all helped, my issue with that, though, was I was expected to drive while on it, and I don't believe in any type of drinking and driving. This is my chance to actually help my brothers and sisters, and you'll meet one, one back there, Jake. I'm just trying to do the right thing, and I think this is the right thing because at the end of the day, the state put in barriers to entry for veterans, in particular, the ones suffering from what you would call PTSD, but I call post-combat stress disorder. The big difference being, if you're in a car accident and have PTSD, you wouldn't go back and do it again. I would go back and fight and admit. That covered all?
Hi.
Sorry, it's a little nerve-wracking, I apologize, gentlemen.
And.
A little emotional.
I apologize too because our screens, uh, went out, but they are back. So can you explain to the board, um, this, this is the proposed project plan at eighteen-thirteen Dutch Mill Road? Can you explain to them what it entails?
Can everybody see me if I'm over here?
Thank you.
Back. So, let me get, I'm not the left. I said, be on the side. All right, so here is the front edge to the property. So if we use the smaller map, which covers the whole property, uh, you can see the boundary lines go all the way around, and that is existing fencing, as well as hedgerows. Basically, you can't come into this farm except through the driveway. So, once you go into the farm, there's a gate, that gate will be locked while we're operating. Uh, the only people that have keys are me, Big Billy, and Young Billy. So, once you enter the entrance, you'll find the residence to the right. That is where Big Billy lives. The front here, as well as the front here, are pasture land for the horses. Once you went back here, we have, uh, left, we had a barn there. They, and like, show what that is, don't. Yeah, I think, don't eat, what was, I don't even think this.
Well, well.
That's barn rooms.
We'll wait till you're sworn in, but I believe that's a building that was there when the picture was taken but has since been demolished.
Sorry about that.
That blew it in.
Yeah, I didn't notice that. So. On this side of the farm, um, this is where the chickens and horses are currently kept, and this pasture land here would be for any of the cattle we bring in, um, because this will still remain as a functioning normal park. So, right here, we have another gate which enters. So, which would bring you into this field right here. The field right here, and we're planted where we're planning to farm the cannabis. So, the reason we picked this is for a number of reasons, and it's one of the reasons that makes this a unique property to do it all. First and foremost, if you notice, the entire perimeter of that field is hedgerows. There is what we call a six-to-eight-foot fence in that hedgerow. As someone who used to pheasant hook, I would not want to go into that hedgerow, it's a mess, like, nobody's getting through that hedgerow. So your only entry point is right here where there'll be a gate on the farm. So, what we're looking at right now is one choke point, two choke point, three choke points. Right here is where we propose to put the canvas, uh, plates. Within that, there will be a three-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot business trailer that we'll be using for storage, um, freeze-drying the plants to, to help eradicate any smell, as well as, uh, any other business functions you need to take care of. So, right here is where the trailer, the business trailer would be, and the rest of this will be where the plants are. So, we requested a ten-thousand-square-foot license, you can get a license up to as much as you want. When we looked at the property, the smart decision is to stay within that hedgerow because people can't see into it. It's not close to the road, and it's not close to the neighbor's homes. We did go out and talked to every neighbor, uh, before we submitted for the zoning package. Uh, additionally, we're going to have two eight-foot fences. The first fence will be approximately twelve-hundred-fifty feet. The reason I'm saying approximately is, what's a security company we work with, and I can touch Florida security, uh, we want to make sure we have enough standoff from the twenty fences. Because you don't want fences so close that they can go right over. With that said, that probably will never happen due to the nature of the security involved.
Can you describe, um, the security plan in general terms? I know the worst thing for security is to lay out your plan publicly, but there are certain things required by the state, and, uh, can you confirm that you will meet those requirements?
Uh, yes, we, we have already talked to the state, the state approved the two-fence plan. Uh, that was one of the first things we talked to them about. Um, the reason we're using two fences is, like, this, we'll explain it, the way we designed this was based off, uh, security consultant. My, my personal experience securing small firebases, company outposts, et cetera, as well as within the agricultural realm, we want to look at other agricultural businesses, and if you look at the poultry business, it's almost identical security features. So we took all three of those and kind of put them together.
Okay, and the, uh, state requirements, uh, for an outdoor grow area, uh, require fencing to be constructed, metal chain links or similar secure material, and measure at least eight feet, eight feet from the ground to the top, and support posts must be securely anchored, as well as meeting the minimum requirements of relevant municipal code provisions, and your fence meet, or your double fence system meets those requirements, correct?
Requirements laid up by the state.
And the locks on the gates would be commercial grade as also required, correct?
Uh, there'll have to be badge access as well.
Yes, but commercially, on badge access.
Commercial grade.
And the outdoor grow area is also required to be protected by a security alarm system and twenty-four-hour video surveillance system that's continuously monitored and capable of detecting power loss, uh, to ensure surveillance of the entire perimeter of the grow area and overall portions of the security fence and all gates. And that's the actual state's language, I'm not revealing anything particular to you, but your plan meets all those requirements, correct?
Yes, all the security cameras, all that, we, uh, Yes. All the security cameras, all that. We, uh, met last week with the chief of police here. He supports our plan and also said he actually supports what we're doing here, which we appreciate.
And, uh, again, the residents would also remain occupied for the foreseeable future, which provides an additional level of security, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, move, before I move on to the, um, operation itself, can we have any questions related to the, the plan?
Just like you said, well, the chief of police, Mitch, I view his security plan, and he approved.
Uh, he put his support behind it, because I, I wouldn't say the chief of police has an approval in it. But here's the thing. We have the pace plan for this, which if anyone's done their time, they know. And the Ian case is emergency. They're the first ones to get the phone call. We don't want our first meeting, if there were a security incident, to be doing it. And if, we wanna make sure he is happy with it, because at the end of the day, there are emergency guys. We need to know they're confident in it.
Any other questions related to the plan? Okay. And can you describe, um, the actual operation, maybe starting with what the growing season is?
Uh, growing season is same as every other farm crop. Uh, you're looking early spring, depending on weather, to early fall. It's pretty similar to what you do with soybeans, corn, all of it.
And how, so the first planting would occur in early spring, correct?
Early spring, once weather permits, because it's like any other plant. They could, they're always so cold-hearted. You know, we can't, we're not gonna be putting plants out if there's expectation for them.
And then, uh, when would they be harvested?
So, harvest will generally take place, there may be two. A small one first, which would be maybe end of July, August. And then the main harvest, like every other farm, will be in the fall.
And how much manpower would be required to harvest this 10,000-square-foot cannabis operation?
Not much. Uh, we're expecting, with me and Billy obviously working there, um, we're expecting maybe two other people.
And during, uh, what periods of time would you require those two other people?
In the fall. Um, with that said, for, because I believe in being honest, we're not 100% sure. You may need two, need four people. What I can tell you is we're not gonna need an army of people.
And, uh, for-
A handful gets it done.
And for what period of time, what duration, would you need these people in the fall? About how many weeks?
I would estimate six, six weeks probably be it.
Okay. And would you also have, um, additional employees in the spring during the planting season?
I'm not 100% sure, because it really comes down, until we're doing it, you, you're guessing to a certain extent, but I wouldn't see, I mean, planting seeds is generally a two-man job. We can do it. But I don't wanna make promises or lie to the community.
Okay.
With this.
And to the, to the point where you're planting, you're, you would be planting from a seed?
Yes, we're gonna plant from seeds.
Okay. And is this manual, or would you use equipment to do it?
All manually.
Okay.
There's gonna be no tilling, no damage to the existing row.
So, the sum total of the, we'll say, traffic coming in and out related to planting would be you more often and a bag of seed?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
And perhaps some small tools? Okay. And then during the, um, harvesting, you have, have these additional people, and then you have to prepare the product for shipment, correct? And that's through the freeze-dry?
Yes.
Method? Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
So, we're using freeze-drying technology for this. So, have you ever, I mean, everyone here has probably smelled the smell of cannabis. And you're like, "Oh, God, it smells so bad." But when it's actually growing, it doesn't. Some of it smells like fruit, some smells like flowers. There's even some which we will not be growing that smell like diesel fuel. Um, I'm not a fan of diesel fuel. Uh, so basically, when the smell is strong, and you, you normally see this at indoor grow operations, what they do is when they cut the plant down and harvest the flowers, they dry them in open air. As they dry, uh, basically what's happening is compounds are breaking down into sulfur. We've been working with, uh, a gentleman named Professor, uh, Rob Magia. He's a professor at Stockton University. He is actually a smell researcher. So, he contacted us to see if he would be able to continue his studies on smell at this operation pending approval. Uh, his initial, um, research indicates the smell of growing cannabis. And this is only about a four-week period. This cannabis, though, it's felt all the time. It's just growing a last portion of flowering. The smell only travels to the free ones at these. Now, once you cut that down and leave it to dry, and everything starts breaking down, that's where you just, it's almost an auto-toll smell. By freeze-drying it, we're taking care of that right away. As soon as they go off the plant, they're going in a freeze dryer. The exhaust from the Fury's dryer, dryer will run through, uh, carbons before leaving the business trail. This way, we're getting rid of the smell to the best of our abilities.
Okay. And just to be clear, um, there is no proposed manufacturing of cannabis or class-two operation, correct?
We're, we're not manufacturing any plant.
Okay. And the, um, going back to the delivery vehicle issue, which I believe the board engineer had asked for some clarification on. On the harvesting side, what do you anticipate as far as, uh, traffic in and out? Uh, if you had to estimate off these 10,000 square feet, you know, give us an idea of how much actual product will leave the farm during the course of the harvest, size-wise?
Uh, I would say probably close to about 500 pounds hold. All of it will be transported in a marked vehicle that I, I'm more than happy to give the description, but for not to, because once again, it's security concerns. Uh, not that we're really super concerned about it. It's just the best way to have security is to not fall behind.
And how, I mean, how heavy do you anticipate the volume, the traffic of that truck to be? How many trips do you anticipate?
It's, uh, probably hundreds, but we're not talking about a truck. It will not be a truck.
Okay, the vehicle, whatever it is, you anticipate that over the course of the four weeks, it would make how many trips?
I'd say less, less than 100 without knowing. We have dispensaries counting the minutes, hoping we get approved. So, we'll be moving as much to the dispensaries as we can.
So, basically, you're looking at an average of maybe five, uh, trips per day? Five vehicles per day at most?
No, I'm sorry. No, we're, we're looking at probably one vehicle at most per day.
Okay.
Transporting the finished product.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Just one day.
But multiple times?
Uh, potentially, but.
I was trying to give an estimate to the board. You don't anticipate that there'll be more than five trips per day with that one vehicle, correct?
That's a lot of drugging, because most of the dispensaries that wanna partner with us and are manufacturing that means are north of Deptford. We haven't had any conversation with anyone down this way in Bylin or any of them.
And the type of vehicle would be a standard car?
Uh, POV, yeah. That, uh, a vehicle, a minivan.
Okay. And, uh, we've talked about security, and we've talked about odor mitigation. Um, can you address whether you anticipate any noise or light issues related to this operation?
No. So, much with other agricultural crops, um, light impacts that. They have photo periods where they're in a vegetative state, and then they go into a flowering state. If you had lights constantly on, it would hurt the crops. And more importantly, it would shine a light on where it's at, but also disturb the neighbors. And we're not okay with that. So, what we're doing instead, since we're gonna have a fair amount of camera equipment besides, uh, motion sensors, we're also gonna have motion trip, uh, infrared lighting. This way, if the lights are on, the camera's gonna see clearly, but we're not impacting the neighbors next to us.
Okay. And finally, um, related to prohibited uses in Franklin Township. Uh, Franklin Township has a general ordinance for all districts that prohibits certain uses, uh, basically, uh, constituting a public nuisance by reason of dissemination of noxious, toxic, or corrosive fumes, smoke, or odors, or dust, noise or vibration exceeding the average intensity of noise or vibration occurring from other causes, endangering the surrounding areas by reason of fire, explosion, producing unobjection, uh, I'm sorry, objectionable heat and glare, uh, resulting in electrical disturbances, contributing to the pollution of water, creating any other objectionable condition which will endanger public health or safety or be to the detriment of the proper use of the surrounding areas. Is there anything related to this operation that would fit into those, that criteria of prohibited uses?
No, this is standard farming.
Okay. And, uh, you are prepared to comply with NJAC 1730 and 30A?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, uh, just to be clear, the, the property is currently farmland assessed, but from conversations with the county tax assessor, what do you understand to, uh, happen to the portion that would be cultivated with cannabis?
The, the, the cannabis farm site will be charged standard tax rate for the township as opposed to farmland assessed. Uh, they said it's actually fairly easy for them to do.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
Um, give, give the, uh, Billy, because that's where he, he, uh, he thinks I'm, he's gonna be-
Then with the little trailer. Yes, sir.
Then, who are we planting near the electric?
Yeah, we're, we're running power.
But you're not gonna put a good, then I'll, uh, some of our performance.
No, no. So, what I can say, and this kinda goes to our security a little bit. So, primary is gonna be underground-run wiring. It's the safest and realistically the best way to do that. Uh, uh, our alternate would be if we did lose our temporary generator or potentially solar panels, depending on what works best for us. It's a fairly low-power consumption operation. And then contingency, if we do have that bigger problem, like, you know, a tornado comes through and knocks out the grid in this area, uh, I'm very good at pulling guard, and me and Billy will be pulling 24-hour guard on the site.
What is that, a question? Um, does anybody else want to testify regarding the process?
Yes. Uh, no, the process is primarily right here.
Yeah, I understand general process. Thinking maybe the board, or I would like to hear, like, from beginning to end, what's happening, like, to the time you're getting seed.
Okay, I heard it's going. And I'll tell you, because I, the engineer, I was looking at the regulations, and one of them indicates that cannabis cultivator should have at least the following storage areas, which must be segregated from each other. So, there's at least four different, very specific segregated, um, areas. Storage for newly received, um, batches of unusable cannabis, um, usable cannabis. So, there's all a bunch of categories. It sounds like you have to have a very specific process as to how to using a trailer.
Yes.
And it work, I don't know if it should be a trailer, but, um, using your building, um, for this. So, I think maybe if we could hear, like, beginning and end, what's happening, we, unless the board doesn't want to hear that. Hear either process completely, did you seed, and how it ends up going out the door when it's done, and what's happening in this building? Is that-
So, first step would obviously be to get the seeds. There's several, uh, high-quality genetics companies that we're aware of, that we would be purchasing the seeds directly through. Um, once we have the seeds, uh, we'll most likely start them, uh, in starters, potentially just to make sure we have the crops up, because, uh, one of the biggest threats to cannabis seedling is mice. And we all know what farms have. So, they'll be in seedlings until, in seed starters until they're big enough. Then they'll be planted in the dirt, uh, where they'll be watered, they'll be under the sun, the rain, all that goodness. And then towards the end of the summer, so as the light starts going back to 12-hour days, uh, it will go into what's called the flowering phase. That's when it starts producing the actual buds and the flower. From that point on, it's only the last four weeks where cannabis actually has a smell. So, you're talking at most one month. Once they're deemed ripe, um, which we use microscopes to do, which is actually one of the big parts of our security. You can't tell if it's ready to go unless you're on the property. Um, so, once that's done, we will go through and cut the tops off the plants, which has the highest quality stuff. That will be immediately freeze-dried. Once that's done, it'll be packaged and taken to a dispensary after state approvals. Everything has to be lab-tested. There are minimal requirements for mold, bacteria, et cetera. Once the, uh, once the lab approves it, then we can give it to the dispensaries, and they can sell it.
Where are you growing the seeds?
Uh, we're gonna be ordering the seeds, sir, at least at the beginning. There is the potential where we'll cultivate our own seeds, but that's not an immediate plan.
So, you're getting seeds, uh, seeds?
Not, we're-
Seeds.
Start. We're gonna start the seeds. We're gonna order a seed.
Where?
Uh, there's various, uh, genetics companies throughout the country.
Now, where are you gonna start, where are you gonna put the starter at?
Oh, um, we'll probably just put them outside, raised up on maybe a table or something.
Good. Within the same 10,000-square-foot fenced area?
Yeah, everything's within it. Any, anything involving of the business takes place in that 10,000-square-foot.
So, if they cut off the tops of the plants, what do you do with the rest of the remaining plant, their roots in total?
Second pass, uh, to get the lower stuff. And then with the roots, the leaves, the stems, the branches, all that, uh, in accordance with state law, will go through a grinding machine and be mixed with, uh, galmonur for mulching, for not, for, uh-
Fertilizing?
Fertilizer. Thank you.
And to the council, pick the cookies.
Did that answer your question? Any other questions?
How do you plan to do it in?
Uh, there's existing, uh, well out there. So, primarily, we'll just be using a hose. We're talking a very small area. So, it can be fairly easily done with that hose.
And, uh, do you have an estimate of the amount of water, um, at least a maximum that it would use during the course of the growing season?
During the course of growing season, we anticipate using well less than 100,000 gallons of water. The thing with cannabis that kind of separates it from its relative plants like tomatoes and all that is it does prefer a slightly drier soil. So, the requirement, like, a farmer who is farming tomatoes will need to use more water than us when we farm the cannabis. And obviously, the more it rains, the less water we need.
And is there anything that you would be using on the, um, on the plants that would affect, uh, that would in any way harm the runoff, uh, water, or, I know there's not septic, or sewer there, but is there any, um, effect on the general runoff of the operation cultivating these plants?
Absolutely not. Because when it comes time to either fertilizer, fertilize. We're just top-dressing with, uh, cow boasts. Uh, we have found that using nature, as opposed to pouring chemicals on the plants, works a whole lot better and is a whole lot cheaper.
That often is a state government expect every-
To our knowledge, the only time you get an inspection is at initial setup. I haven't heard anything about additional, uh, inspections. But what I can say is the council and all that will always have an open invitation there. Because the best way, I think, for people to understand what we're doing, is come see it. I mean, so the neighbors I talked to were so happy, like, "I can't wait to come see your security. I can't wait to come see the plants." You know, it was, it's pretty good.
How many other outside grow facilities are cursed?
Just one. It's, uh, owned by Nova Farms. Uh, one of my friends works there, and they're outdoor in seven acres. I know it was very, very pleased with them, based off the numbers I'm hearing for the checks that now should scale. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And yours.
Thank you, pretty much, sir.
Thank you.
And I'd like to call, uh, William L. Pfeifer at this time.
Yes.
How are you?
I'm doing all the stuff.
Okay. You've already, uh, been sworn in?
Yes.
And given your name and address?
Yes.
And you are one of the, um, main parts, main members in the corporation applying for this variance?
Yes.
And can you tell us, um, the proposed use of this cannabis cultivation operation? Um, how that is inherently a benefit, an inherently beneficial use?
Yes.
In your opinion? In your opinion?
So this proposed project site is already in a zone that permits agriculture, which is itself a use that promotes the general welfare and is inherently beneficial. This is evidenced by the preferential treatment given to farming operations both through the right to farm legislation, preferential tax treatment, and public funding of farmland preservation. Furthermore, the New Jersey Department of Agriculture specifically states, "For all of us, farmland preservation is an important part of keeping New Jersey green and prosperous. Preserve farmland limits urban sprawl, protects our water and soil, provides us with an abundance of locally grown farm products, and maintains our connection to the land and the longstanding agricultural traditions that earned our reputation as the Garden State." And I'd like to remind everybody that we are the Garden State, and yet urban sprawl is still here within the township. We now have two Super Wawas, strip malls, fast food chains, and a multitude of housing developments going up. Yet still, funding for farmland preservation has been approved multiple times by statewide referendums. County municipal level governments have also supported the program financially and procedurally. Desire to preserve farms and keep farms operating is based on its inherent benefit to the general But the risk of continuing to lose farmland due to financial concerns of the farmers and municipalities is very evident. As a matter of fact, in the township's master plan, they also state that profitability and sustainability of farms is of major concern. And it should be a valid concern, considering that agriculture in our township is down. When you actually look at the Franklin Township Farmland Preservation Plan, from years 1984 to 2019, total agriculture in our township is down almost 44%. So some of you might be asking like, well, why is it down so much? The reality is, it's very, very difficult to be profitable farming. It's very risky, there's a lot of unknowns, it's a lot of hard work, and you have the majority of farmers in our township who are a lot older. And they're either retiring from farming or they're moving on from this world. And they're passing down their properties and their farms to the next generation, and that next generation is my age. I'm 37 years old. And I'm a high school teacher, I'm a college professor, I have a stable job, I have a stable income, I have benefits, I have vacation, all that sort of stuff, and there's a lot of people like me that are getting these farms. And they're like, why, why would I give up all this stability? I have family, I have a home, a mortgage, everything to take care of. Why am I going to give this up to go farm something that's risky? So what do they do? They sell the farm, they subdivide it for houses, and I think that's kind of something that we're all seeing here in this township right now. So the influx of revenue from preservation, the revenue from, like the influx of revenue from preservation, the revenue from cannabis cultivation will also serve the same purpose, allowing farms to continue operating thereby limiting urban sprawl. Increasing farm profits and longevity while simultaneously helping quell the concerns of the township of farm sustainability and profitability, that's via the master plan. And let's just put it in perspective, everybody. If we just took, I'll draw some other comparisons later, but if we looked at a bushel of corn, a bushel of corn weighs about 55 pounds. A bushel of corn sold on the market, you get about $4.50 per bushel. You have to produce a tremendous amount of corn in order for it to be profitable. If I compared that to cannabis and I took a 55-pound bushel of cannabis, cannabis isn't measured in bushels, but let's just say it's a 55-pound bushel of cannabis, that would be about $55,000 to $60,000. That's profitability. This crop can be helpful for smaller farms, but a one-time infusion of money from selling development rights is not large enough to sustain the farming operation for long. This proposed use is a regular yearly boost to farming operation, allowing reinvestment into other areas of the farm as well. Now cannabis is regulated differently than any other crop, however, as, as my partner Jim mentioned, it grows just like every other crop. It is a plant. It has roots, it photosynthesizes, it breaks down CO2 into a carbon sugar and releasing oxygen. It uses water, it uses sunlight, it uses every other nutrient just like any other plant would do. Additionally, cannabis is inherently beneficial in that it has medicinal and therapeutics benefits that include pain reduction, improved sleep performance, cancer management, and relaxation, to name a few. Although it was only recently legal in New Jersey, studies have shown that legalization in other states helps reduce the consumption of opioids. And lastly, the municipality has the ability to tax us 2%. I also want to put on the record that the municipality never wrote an ordinance to tax us 2%, however, we want to be good community members. I am from this community, I grew up here, I love my community, I love my neighbors, and I want to be able to, if I can produce something that is profitable and other people can benefit from it, that's a win.
Anything else related to inherent beneficial?
I'll get into some of that later.
Okay. And an alternative way to meet the positive criteria besides being inherently beneficial is to show that the property is particularly suitable for the propoist use. So can you explain how this site is particularly suitable to this proposed use?
Yes. So, so this site particularly is suitable for the issues, one, because it's, as we already mentioned a couple of times, it's a small operation. It is 10,000 square feet. To put it in perspective, because some people might not be able to visualize or think about what 10,000 square feet looks like, we did the football analogy. However, think of two basketball courts, that's about 10,000 square feet, or in acres, it's .23 acres. It's less than a quarter acre. Also, the site is sparsely populated. Where the grow area is, I mean, my neighbors have double-digit acreage around me that there's no development on besides a couple residential houses. Additionally, the property includes a residence, which my father will still can continue to live there, which also adds to, one, just security and also day-to-day operations of the facility. Also, there's a lot of barriers to entry. As Jim mentioned earlier, we have multiple points to access the operation if somebody had to access it. Everything's fenced in, there's really only one ease of access through that one main It's also in an old arena where both my parents used to practice, that's been there for 25, 30 years. And it has 25, 30-year-old hedgerows, picker bushes, poison ivy, trees. You cannot, you cannot see into it. Finally, I'm not saying that every property is suitable, because every property obviously is not suitable for this use. However, my family's property is uniquely suited considering the property is literally highlighted multiple, multiple times in the Franklin Township Farmland Preservation Plan as a target, as I quote, target farm, due to the fact that 100% of the property has prime farming soil. Not to mention it's also located in an agricultural development area.
Can I direct your attention over to this side? This player for a minute. On this property line, on the side where the cannabis cultivation operation would be, are there any residents, residences along here?
So I'll just point to a bit. So my neighbor right here directly in line with this broadcast here right in the middle is Miss Mignolet, if I think she's here tonight. And that's her daughter Tina, who is right next door, right in front, actually a little bit, little bit in front of my dad's lineup here.
And then behind that, where the cannabis operation is, what is there?
So there's nothing directly behind it. If you look at the small picture up here, so this is about close to 15 acres of woods. Our closest neighbor directly behind us is about, I think it's like close to a mile behind us on Clark Ave. Mr. Daley lives right here, and that's it.
And the farthest side, Mrs. Mignolet's son, that, with the steel, is there any residents in that area?
No, you can kind of see, you can see the line right here where the property line divides. This Mignolet's son, that penny, owns this property right here, which is just field, and right behind there is a bunch of woods.
And the nearest neighbor in the back of the property is how far away, may I ask?
The nearest neighbor is probably close to 15 acres away or close to a mile away, roughly.
Okay. And is there a particular way that the winds tend to blow?
Yes.
This property?
So what's nice about the property, and it's kind of really hard to tell here, but the property is almost positioned north-south almost perfectly. In the summer months or in the warmer months, winds typically blow from the southerly region to the northerly region. So they're blowing from the street back to the woods. So everybody's worried about snow, and I'll get into more snow a little bit later, but the reality is wind is actually blowing away from the residential houses to the woods, and there's nobody behind us. And Mr. Daley doesn't care.
That's your understanding from speaking with him, correct? Okay. And one last thing that you may have touched on briefly, but I just want to emphasize it. This particular farm that would be potentially being preserved as a farm through the added income of the cannabis operation, this is, this is one of the target farms in the Franklin Township Preservation, Farmland Preservation Plan, correct? And part of the reason, in addition to its size and location, is that it's 100% prime soil, correct?
100% prime soil, and it also listed as 77.9% tillable ground, and the reason being is because there's a chunk of woods.
In the back.
In the back.
And that woods would also serve as a natural buffer to any.
Absolutely. Plus, my neighbor's 15 acres behind them of woods.
All right. And the goal, the first goal that, and this is going to the no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
The first goal identified in Franklin Township's 20, or 2004 master plan is to preserve the quality of life in Franklin Township. And the first objective under this goal is to retain the rural character of the community. Does the proposed variance in any way impair the intent and purpose of the master plan?
No. As a matter of fact, it actually achieves the goals of the master plan, some goals of the open space plan, and also satisfies areas of the farmland preservation plan. One of the goals of the master plan and the open space plan is to preserve the rural character and quality of life. At the end of the day, this crop allows us to keep this a farm, an actual farm. It seems very easy to subdivide properties nowadays and sell them as houses, but I would genuinely like to keep this a farm. And by default, having it a farm helps achieve the goal simply by, because farms are rural by nature. And farming by its nature improves the quality of life and being connected to their natural roots. The other part of the master plan is, it says attracting and retaining agricultural businesses. Now, I mentioned earlier that total agriculture in the township is down 44% from 1984 to 2019. The goal of the master plan is to attract and retain agricultural businesses. What better opportunity right now where you have an actual agricultural business wanting to come into the township who really has already been here, family that's been here since the 60s, a younger man who eventually will take over this property, who wants to keep it a farm? Now we can attract an agricultural business, kinda, but we can also help retain it by now producing something that's profitable and that I can reinvest back into my family's property to help bolster other agricultural production.
Thank you.
Other parts of the master plan, economic expansion and diversification. We've done that tremendously in this township over the years. I remember when I was a kid, and I'm being serious when I say this, I remember when I was a kid, Wawa used to be an actual deli on the corner of 40 and Main Route. And now we have two Super Wawas. I love Wawa coffee, I'm a big fan, but we have two Super Wawas, Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, strip malls, housing develops going up, which is fine. I understand that's necessary. However, we are supposed to be an agricultural rural community. That is part of Franklin Township's website under the About Us, literally says rural agricultural community. And in order for us to keep it a rural agricultural community, we also have to expand and diversify into agricultural crops. And this is one of those niche crops that can be profitable, and now we're expanding and diversifying our portfolio here in the township rather than growing soybeans and corn and alfalfa.
Okay. And the last question, and we've already been over. Oh, I'm sorry.
You've got a couple more.
Well, go on.
There's a couple more. At least one more, anyway. This is also part of the master plan, which I kind of already mentioned earlier, but sustainability and profitability. I mentioned corn at $4.50 per bushel, soybeans are $10 per bushel roughly, potatoes are $13 a bushel, and cannabis would be about $55,000 a bushel. Which again, allows a greater reinvestment back into the farm and a shot of tax revenue back into the township as well, which could be used to satisfy aspects of the open space plan. At the end of the day, farming up 10,000 square feet of cannabis is not in any way impair or contradict the purpose, the purpose of the master plan. If at anything, it absolutely achieves a lot of those goals.
And I know we've touched on a lot of the next topic, but does the proposed variance in any way impair the applicable zoning ordinances?
Yeah, no. So this property is owned Pinelands Rural Residential. So as referenced in Pinelands, in the applicable ordinances section, it permits farming in all its branches, restricting only obnoxious businesses like slaughterhouses and piggeries. Ordinance 253 for Pinelands Rural Residential states, "Any production of plants or animals useful to man," and I want to just make a side note, human beings have been used to cannabis for its recorded record 26,000 years is the earliest known record of cannabis use on fossils. So we've been using this for a long time. It's only been very, very recently in our human history that we have banned it due to big corporation profit and political gain. I continue. So useful to man, including but not limited to livestock, poultry, fruits, vegetables, flowers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It does specifically prohibit two things, mining and landfilling. Furthermore, the Pinelands also says that cannabis farming is agriculture and is a permitted use. The application does not substantially impair the intent of the prohibited use ordinance, while the prohibited uses include those that, and I quote, "constitute a public nuisance by reason of dissemination of obnoxious, toxic, or corrosive fumes, smoke, odor, or dust." This project only produces an odor for a very short amount of time, as Jim mentioned, about four weeks roughly, during each harvest cycle. And to be quite honest with you, ladies and gentlemen, odor, as far as bad odor, is very subjective. I'd also like to note that at one point, this is a personal story, my parents had almost 100 head of cattle, about 20 horses, pigs, dogs, and my neighbor's chickens would always find their way onto their property as well to join the fun. We had a monster, monster manure pile. Nobody complained.
Let's say maybe.
Maybe they did, Mr. Tish, I don't know. I don't remember anybody complaining. But at the end of the day, did you get fined, Dad? I don't think so. Most, all my, my neighbors have been there my entire life, or most of my life, and we usually keep to ourselves, and at the end of the day, I don't remember any issues with any of that. So the size of this cultivation is 10,000 square feet, and the distance from residential houses is very, you know, typically far. I mean, we measured it out, our closest neighbor to the actual operation is Miss Mignolet, she's roughly about 400 to 500 feet away, and then our farthest neighbor is almost a mile away that borders the property. There, the farm's selective for two reasons. Obviously, I already mentioned all the hedgerows act as a smell barrier, it takes advantage of the prevailing winds, because the winds blow south to north in the warmer months, so blowing away from residential houses. Also, a short smell window, only about four weeks, we mentioned that. We also mentioned freeze drying as well. So basically, we took a huge process that could potentially cause odor that takes two to three months, and we boiled it down to basically 24 to 48 hours. Also, myself and Jim, or me or Jim, went to every single neighbor. We spoke with every neighbor except one, that was Mrs. Santangelo, she's an older woman, and we left a letter on her doorstep saying if she had any concerns to give us a call. We spoke with every single neighbor. Now, what I was told to my face by every one of my neighbors, that property borders ours, they had, they had no issue, do whatever you want. I'm being a little facetious, saying do whatever you want, but at the end of the day, they didn't care. They had a couple, some, some neighbors had a couple concerns, we talked about the concerns, and at the end of it, they're like, all right, that's fine. Now apparently, there's a couple neighbors in here that border my property that told me to my face that they were fine with it, and now they might be coming. me to my face that they were fine with it, and now they might be coming out against it. I'm not sure. We'll find out. But, I was verbally told to my face, Jim was told to his face, or we were both told to both of our faces that it was fine.
Can I ask, um, if there were, um, an issue with the smell despite your anticipation that there's not going to be, are there other steps that can be taken to further mitigate any smell issue?
Yes. So, um, as Jim already kind of pointed out, we're going to be running with a freeze dryer. We don't really anticipate any smell coming out of that to begin with, but just to be safe, um, we're going to be having carbon filters attached to it to help filter out any excess smell that may, um, come out of it. We're also going to be planning, uh, planting companion plants. And if, for those of you who don't know what a companion plant is, it's basically a beneficial plant where plants, they're, they actually can be buddies, so plants can help each other. So, we're going to be planting companion plants that not only help our cannabis plants, but also, also specific plants that produce a floral smell. So, some of the plants that we're going to be planting are lemon balm, lavender. We want to plant jasmine, but we're not sure if jasmine's going to be hardy enough. Marigolds, begonias, um, and I'm sure there's a few other plants that we'll be able to find that produce a really nice... Oh, lilac produces a great smell as well. So, we'll be also planting them. Not only does it beautify the property, but it also creates a natural smell that is very pleasant. Um, we already mentioned this earlier, but we are partnering with a Stockton researcher, already have done that, and he's planning on coming out and doing research to actually see how far smell travels. What is nice about that is we actually have some research. Hopefully, that can maybe squash some concerns of municipalities around the state, uh, some of the boards around the state, and also some of the neighbors that are concerned with any sort of smell. Um, and then, you know, I, I just kind of want to point out, this is funny, you know, everybody's worried about smell. It kind of confuses me a little bit considering we, we live in a farming community. When I was in high school, I used to work on Fruity Nursery. We planted a lot of cilantro. I hate the smell of cilantro. Cilantro stinks. And you have frigging acres of cilantro behind residential houses. What are you going to do? Like, it is, you live in a farming area, stuff stinks sometimes. If for some reason odor is an issue, other things that we plan on doing, putting up carbon impregnated fabric around our fences if odor is an issue, just to help even more. But at the end of the day, if smell, if the smell was so strong, then why since the 1980s was Franklin Township flying police helicopters to look for illegal grow operations in the township? As a matter of fact, my dad would always tell this story to me. He told this story to me a couple times. Actually had a police helicopter land in one of our fields because they were using infrared, and they saw our manure pile light up, and they thought it was an illegal grow operation. So, if the smell is so strong, wouldn't it just be easier just to kind of drive around and just smell out the window just to see where the area is? So, you know, I just kind of wanted to throw that in there.
Just to clarify, that was state police, right?
I, it was, I'm sorry, state, state police. I apologize, I apologize. State police, I'm sorry.
Um, if you'd like. I think that's all my questions. If anyone has any other questions?
Yeah, as Lee, what, listen, I think they'll be watching, give you a report, please.
Sure. Thank you. We, we had done a, a report dated June 24, 2024, based upon the information that's been submitted. Um, and to most, everything that's been in my review letter is what they, you know, they, they've spoken to because they, it's the vibes of it. But, this is a Pinelands Rural Residential District. It's not necessarily agricultural district. And in the Pinelands Rural Residential District, cannabis is not a specifically permitted use. That's why they're here, for a use variance. Um, the Franklin Township Ordinance O-6X21 specifically says that, um, the growing and cultivation of cannabis is only permitted in industrial zones. So, this is not an industrial zone. As such, the applicant has requested the D variants, and that's why we're here tonight. There's another, another D variance associated with this because in the section of our ordinance 253, 96C, it says that no more than one principal use to be used on a parcel, and this was technically me too. So, they're, they're kind of hand in glove and go together. You get one, you get both. Um, but those are the two use variants associated with what we're talking about tonight. We've heard testimony that this is only for cultivation, and there will be no manufacturing of cannabis as part of this application. Um, 10,000 square feet of cultivation area is what we've heard of, and a business trailer in that enclosed area for storage and for processing or packaging of the cultivated Since our, since this is not permitted in the township, we don't have a lot of regulations as if it was permitted. So, we kind of roll back on the state regulations that we heard testimony about tonight, uh, the Administrative Code 17:30. Um, and some of that is what is in my review letter. Like, paragraph four, it specifically states it can't happen on, um, valued or assessed or land for, or, or not assessed, I'm sorry, farmland, it can't happen on farmland assessed land. So, I guess there's a way to do that. You can un-assess the land. Um, I don't really know how that works. It's really not a function of what we do here, but there's certain state regulations that they're going to have to deal with. Um, also, uh, they were talking about the fencing. That's another specific, specific state regulation, and I just want some clarification on this. I know you, you had testimony that said you spoke with the state, but 17:30, 10.3C, I think, it says, "The property shall, that contains an outdoor grow area, and the outdoor grow area itself shall each be securely surrounded by fencing and lock gates." So, around the entire perimeter. When I read that, it tends to say the entire property needs to be fenced, and then the specific grow area. So, that's something that you're really going to have to deal with at the state level, but it's a, it's a concern from where we are today.
Am I allowed to clarify this?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, the property is completely fenced in, uh, number one. Number two...
With eight-foot fence?
Uh, with the six-foot fence. So, and now, let's think about this logically. Does it make logical sense to completely encompass a farm that is supposed to be primed farmland with a eight-foot chain link stockade fence? It doesn't make sense, and actually kind of goes against the cream act as well. So...
Hang on. My client is fully prepared to comply with whatever requirement the state has related to that fence. If the state tells him that he needs an eight-foot fence, then he will, you know, do that, but his belief is that the state does not require that around the entire property.
It would tend to make sense. I just wanted to bring that up so we were aware of it at this point in time.
And we did talk to the state already about that, and they were totally fine with the two fences that we had. And I have documentation for that, too.
Come on. Um, so that, and I don't know why I necessarily put this in here, but in the review letter, paragraph 12, the township fully permits, uh, a variance is necessary for any foot-tall fence in this particular, that's really a subject of site plan and not necessarily use variance today. I don't mean to, I don't mean to confuse the item, but I just wanted to bring that up so we should know that you should be prepared at the time of site plan if you're asking for a variance for the entire parcel or just the double as you have.
And we are actually requesting a waiver of a site plan if that's possible because it is just limited to two fences, but if it's, uh, not possible, we would certainly obviously request that variance at the same time. I, in the meantime, if the waiver is granted, we would request that variance now.
Some of the other items on our review letter have been addressed by the plans that we received today, and, and you should have them on your, uh, on the dais there. We heard testimony about the number of types of vehicles, security, noise, light. Um, really, that, there's not a whole lot of engineering per site with this because, you know, we're just crawling into 10,000 square foot area.
Yep. Thanks, Steve.
Can, can I ask, uh, two follow-up questions?
Sure.
Uh, just to be, uh, clear, when you talked about the zoning for the Pineland Rural Residential, um, the second primary use listed is, uh, farming in all its branches, correct? So, even though it's not designated as agricultural in its title, farming in any of its branches is the second, uh, permitted use for that zoning.
Right, but, but it's not permitted in the township. Cannabis itself is not...
No, no, I understand, I understand your argument about cannabis. I'm just saying that farming itself is a permitted use in the PRR zone. In fact, it's the second permitted use after residential. A is residential, B is farming. In all its forms, obviously, the township's position is, uh, that marijuana would lead the variance.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, there was one other thing. You had mentioned that the township, um, or the, did you say the township doesn't allow cannabis growth? You're just referring to the fact that you're requiring this variance, correct? Cannabis cultivation? Because I believe, I believe, um, if I'm understanding what you were saying correctly, that by not, uh, disallowing cannabis cultivation, they, your position is they're allowing it, but only in the industrial zone.
Correct.
But they, but just to be clear, they didn't, uh, disallow it, they chose to allow it. It's just that your position is that that ordinance applies only to the industrial zoning.
That's correct.
And that's why you're saying that we are here today for this variance?
Correct.
Okay. And if the township had wanted, they obviously could have said that they did not want cannabis cultivation anywhere in the township at that point.
Well, more importantly, I mean, you're putting them on the spot more importantly.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. I'm just trying to clarify.
They wanted to allow cultivation, and this isn't what is said they allowed, since they didn't need it for variance.
But, my only point is they were not, correct. Uh, uh, my only point is they were not opposed to the actual idea of cultivation of cannabis in Franklin Township because they could have at that point disallowed it everywhere if they had chosen to do so.
How they may adjust it and all, just that it's not allowing this, this, that's why you're here.
Okay. Uh, anything?
Do you have a question? She... That shake will... Yeah, let's, uh, let's open up the focus and... That can... Gee, Mike, I mean, that's me, I did the surgery, I favor, I froze, that's you. Okay, anybody from the public legislature, I get any comments regarding this application? We'll put this before. Everybody has three minutes. Sweet. Go, we're all asleep. Suddenly, two, two, three. When they pledge that, older hamburgers, try to tell any health up.
Yes.
Michael Kowesgrove, 103 Eisenhower Drive, Dune, New Jersey. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kowesgrove. I currently resident of Univista Township. Uh, although I currently live there, uh, I grew up here in Franklinville, went to, uh, Main Road, Dulce Middle School, Dulce High School. Um, and I still have family here. The ultimate goal, though, is to move, hopefully move back here to Franklinville. Um, Billy and I grew up together. Uh, we've been best friends since I was 12, and I'm 37 now. Um, as a matter of fact, I used to help the Pfeiffer family on their farm, uh, bail hay, clean horse stalls, um, and that's currently where they're planning on, uh, growing the cannabis, that, that farm. Uh, this town has been known to be a farming community, and my hopes is that it stays that way. I fully support what Billy and Jim are proposing with Mystic Botanical Farms. Uh, 1813 Dutch Mill Road is more than suited for this use. It would be nice to see agriculture come back to the township and for this township to actually support the continuation of its agricultural heritage. The project proposed by Mystic Botanical Farms is an opportunity not only to revitalize the local economy, but also to honor and build upon our community's rich farming traditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good conversation. Anyone else?
Yeah. My name is Jeff Tish. Oh. Read the address. 1194 Dutch Mill Road. Jeff Tish. Uh, I own 70 acres right across from Billy's house, and, um, I'm all for him. Uh, he's, you, you take the future farmers of America, this is how they're going to start. To produce, uh, corn, right now, to produce it is $5 a bushel to produce. It's now bringing four bucks. Okay? So, we're at a loss here. This is your future farmer, right here. When he gets on his feet with this, he's going to branch out, like he said, and do other things. So, I have no idea how he's going to, uh, produce corn or beans or anything else and put five bucks a bushel out to plant it and get close to four bucks a bushel back. He's going to lose money. So, I'm all for what he's doing. I'm, I'm a neighbor. He gets his, he's, he more or less said to me, once he gets his, uh, feet on the ground and he makes some money, he's going to branch out to other agricultural products.
Say. All right. Thank you. Come forward. Next. Hi, kids. Hey, please. Burnstake. I must admit, I, I, hey. Are you together?
Kinda. Kinda. Can we be together? Yours. Thank you.
Swear to God, that's why you're here, yes?
Yes, yes, sir.
Name and address, please?
Susan Mankor, 1839 Dutch Mill Road, which I don't exist according to what was told here today. I live closest to the property. It's like my house is there and the property line is here.
Yes, sir.
But I, that's why I decided to speak up because all of a sudden I don't exist.
Okay.
I'm Josephine Kendall. I live at 1860...
It's micro.
I'm Josephine Kendall. I live at 1861 Dutch Mill Road. I live two houses down from Billy.
I live in the middle. She's here, me than her.
Are you opposed to this, some?
I just have some questions, and I just would like to ask some questions, and get some answers. That's why I came.
Okay. Ask the questions.
Go ahead. I thought you were going to go first. Uh, uh, first of all.
I got a lot of questions, so let her go first.
Okay.
You only come up there.
No, no. First of all, you came around to the house and it caught me off guard in this, I, I did, I said, okay. Oh, okay, I was a...
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to tell Billy that he's, he's telling the truth, that when he came around to the house in the summer, I did, uh, agree because he caught me off guard, and, uh, but when you have a chance to sit back and think about it, uh, there's a lot of things that I don't agree. Uh, first, my husband and I think that by having this in our neighborhood could cause a lot of riffraff, people coming in and out, and we have a nice little neighborhood right now. It's kind of quiet, and, and we're, we're fine. We don't need this. And who's to say that in the future, that somehow or another he won't enlarge it? You know? He'll be doing good, possibly, and then he'll want to do better, so he'll want to enlarge it. So, then where do we go? Uh, I'm a little nervous right now.
So, are you being nervous?
Um, I just, um, my husband and I disagree as far as having him, and my brother across the street, that can't be here tonight due to a, a death in the family. Um, they agree. They don't want it either, and they live right across the street from, so, um, I'm surprised really that there aren't more people here that live on our street, really, our road. But, anyway, that's how I feel, and my family, thank you.
Now, I got three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Susan Mankor. This isn't, you can't even hear this. It's not working.
Chris, it's not working.
Hello?
My earphones not working.
Is it? I don't think it's working. I, I can talk loud enough, I think. I have a pretty good voice, but, um, okay.
You want to speak to us?
Let's speak. Okay, I'm going to speak to you guys. Sorry. I haven't been in court in so long, forgive me. Okay, so I'm a school bus driver, and I park my bus right between my house and his property. I'm probably the closest to what he's building here, and I can see it all. And he came to my house, and I wasn't expecting him. Neither was my husband, and my husband's like, oh, he doesn't really care. I'm like, okay, I guess it's not a big deal.
I'm probably the closest to what he's building here. And I can see it all. And he came to my house, and I wasn't expecting him, neither was my husband, and my husband's like, oh, he doesn't really care. I'm like, okay, I guess it's not a big deal, I don't know. I was concerned about the smell, I was concerned about how big it might get. I was also concerned, was it going to be closest to my house, and I think it is, pretty sure it is. I live on, if you're looking at his property, I live on the right side. When they said there was no neighbors on that side, I was like, what are you talking about? Like, I'm not, I don't exist, you know? So anyway, I'm a little concerned, like, what happens when I go to sell my house? Is anyone going to want to live there? Is anyone going to want to buy it? I have allergies, I'm concerned about, and my bus is going to smell of cannabis, I'm driving around, and I'm picking up special needs kids, you know? I don't know. So I'm concerned about those things. And I tried to voice some of my concerns, and we did talk to Billy, and I think he's a great guy, have no problem with he, or his dad. I just came here tonight to find out a little bit more about it, because we really didn't go through a lot, and I didn't understand all that was going on, so this is like information for me. I get a little upset when I was not even brought up that I even lived next door, like, one side of the house, no one lives there, like, what? What do you mean no one lives there? And I would love it if he had his property with neighbors far away, but that's not the way it is, that's the problem. And I'm concerned, what if I want to sell my house and nobody wants to buy it?
You know, I have a question. Is there anybody else in our fine bearings, close to us, that has that kind of farm? Well, that's in depth.
I'm not sure where exactly, I know the owner, I am not exactly sure what town Street's about.
But that's a long way from us.
That's the answer.
Good, keep it that way.
All right, thank you. One else would like to be heard.
Please step forward.
Jacob Lade, 135 Summit Ave, Deptford, New Jersey. Gentlemen, I, Jim mentioned me earlier. I was a Lance Corporal in the United States Marine Corps, former machine gunner in 3rd Battalion, 8th Marines. And my family come, I have a member in my family that has fought in every single war since the Civil War. Talking to my dad constantly, he was in the Navy. We both talked about how the American dream is fleeting. Now, this American dream is what I voluntarily signed up to die for. Being a machine gunner, you know it's cut forward, you're going to war, they're going to be targeting you. I understand that this is a very touchy subject, but my question to y'all is, who would be better than to lead this front and take this on when there are so many questions, than a veteran that committed his life to this country, a mentor, and a teacher, and an amazing role model to this town's youth? Both of these gentlemen will offer you attention to detail, communication and collaboration with the community. And again, to go on what Jim had said, when I had gotten out of the Marine Corps, I had no idea what to do. I was a former team leader of a machine gun team, I led five of the best Marines you could possibly hope to meet in your whole life. Now, I EAS'd, which is getting out, I came home. Less than 24 hours later, I was thrown into my childhood house that I grew up in, and I went from leading the team Marines to leading the head of the unemployment line. Now, that wrecked my mentality. I fell into a pit of Great Depression. I couldn't talk to anybody, I didn't want to talk to my family or friends, because I didn't want them to think poorly of me. Now, I had to do some soul searching to find myself again. I chose to take the route of medical cannabis, and that helped me a tremendous amount. One of my best friends went to the VA, I'm sorry, this is very hard for me to talk about. One of my best friends went to the VA and was prescribed opioids, and three months later, killed himself on Christmas Day. I want y'all, I bring this up just so y'all think of this, this is bigger than just recreational use. There are, on the recreational side, there may be a lack of self-control that some people show, but I do not want that to overshadow the benefits of this plant and how it can affect this community. And what better community to be a pillar of that beacon of hope for veterans than Franklin? Thank you.
Big good grace for a legend, big swear to tell truth about the testimony.
Yes, I do. My name is Alice Munier, I'm from 1777 Dutch Mill Road. I came here mostly to find out exactly what the variance was, but after listening to some of the, I don't want to say lies, but basically they were. Billy Piper Jr. came over to my children's house, and my son wanted to check it out for me, I was in Maine. And they, he was told that there would, or they were told, there would be three chain link fence, 10 feet high. Not going to be. Also told that you can't get through the hedgerow. I have arthritis of the back, the knees, and had open heart surgery, and I was on that property. So it's accessible. The fence around it has been knocked down by horses, deer, whatever. Billy also told me that someone was raising marijuana on my neighbor's property. I went searching around, looking for it. I didn't find it. Whether it's there or not, I don't know, but that's why it was on the property. And the other thing that bothers me, and I think that's why I came in mostly, was the price of the property. I checked on the National Association of Realtors, and it said on hold, the value of property in a community that raises pot will go up, but the housing closest to the facility drops, decreases. So when, when you think about it, once that bullet is fired, you're not going to bring it back. And I just hope that you'll consider these things. There's more to it than that, but right now, that's all I really feel like talking about. Okay, thank you very much.
Kristy Parkins. I've lived in this community for over 38 years now. My son is William L. Piper. Obviously, I'm here to support him, but also importantly, I'm here to support our local farming community. Everyone in this room should ask themselves if we want to become another Philly suburb with the crime and problems that come with suburbia, or do we want to be a quiet rural farm town? You have to decide, suburbs or farm. This is a farming community, I mean, I believe it says on the website, rural farming. And I'm starting to see concrete. And it's a shame, because you know what, you can't bring farmland back. Once that's developed, it's gone. This is a way to maintain our beautiful town. When my son's father and I were together, we traveled the country rodeo and worked incredibly hard baling hay and maintaining our farm. It's hard to make a full-time living farming, and what my son and Jim are proposing is a way for my son to keep the property a farm and not turning into another housing development. I hope you guys really consider doing the right thing and granting them the variance that they need to keep this a farm. Thank you.
My name is Gary Cop, I live at 3 West Cherry Street in Winona, New Jersey, not far from here. I'm really here tonight to support Bill. I've known Bill for a long time, gets me just thinking about it. If you, as a group, look at the amount of work that these two gentlemen have put into making this presentation possible tonight, I share an office with them at school, we're teachers. I can tell you, I have not seen anyone put that much work into anything, and the amount of passion and care over the course of the past years for him to make this a possibility. Well, this gentleman over here talked about the future. I've been trying to move my family to Franklinville for the past year. You all know the housing market right now, right? I bid on three houses, I haven't been successful yet. I have three children, 12, 8, and 6. So we're talking about the future. We're not talking about the past or stereotypes that may or may not be true, but this is the way the future is going, and we are talking about building something great. This gentleman right here, and this gentleman right here, I actually don't think there could be two better people in the entire world to do this. I did not ever have to serve, and I am blessed because of the freedom that this gentleman affords me and this gentleman right over here. And they're telling stories that the only way they were able to help themselves is because of something that a plant that grows in the ground. If there's any way to help people who help protect our freedom, why would we stop that? I just don't understand that. So, much like Billy's mom said, I do encourage you to do the right thing and think about the future, not to look the past, but think about people like me who are trying to move into a town like this because of what it means. I live in Winona, we want to get out, because every lot's a quarter acre, right? And everyone knows everyone else's business. And Franklinville's a beautiful country, I love driving down here, and that's why we want to get in. So I highly encourage you to please, 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 give these guys what they're asking for, based on the sacrifices they've both made in time and service for our country. Thank you.
Excuse me? I do. My name is Kim Piper Capelli. I live in Ag Harper Township, New Jersey. And I am not good at speaking in front of people, so I do apologize for that, but I am speaking from my heart. I'm standing up here because I personally know my nephew. And he is one of the most hardest-working, dedicated people, and if there is anything that the state or the township need, I guarantee you, my nephew will do it above and beyond. I grew up on that property. I know that property, I know the ring, the horse ring, I used to show horses and ride horses too. Like I said, I was on that farm. I asked my nephew, we had a debate about this, because he asked me how I felt about all this, and I'm like, well, I don't know, I wasn't so sure about it. But after he talked to me about it, first of all, if anyone goes onto the property, that's trespassing. They shouldn't be doing that. And I can tell you that where this is getting put, because he in detail told me, that fence is inside another fence. Yes, there is that broken-down fence, I saw that 40 years ago, that fence. And yes, there is shrubbery and everything, the poison ivy and everything's on it. But I guarantee, my whole point is, there isn't a doubt in my mind that my nephew and his partner, I don't know you that well, but I know this man right here, he has busted his rear end his whole life, and I would love to see my mom's property be brought up, because if he's making $55,000 or something a bushel, I guarantee you, it's going to look like South Fork. We're Dallas, you know, where I'm talking about, and I would love that for my mom, you know, because there won't be any broken fences, he'll spend that money on that fence, and I guarantee you. But I love my nephew, and I did this because I'm not good at this, but thank you.
Yes, my name is Lisa Byrne, I live at 619 Judy Ave, in Franklinville. I've been sitting here listening to all the positivity about Billy Piper, and I'm 150% on board. I don't even care to even read this, I support Billy, and I hope you all support Billy. He is the most amazing man. He went to school with my son, he was actually a groomsmen in my husband and I's wedding. He's family to me. What he is doing and the hard work that he has put into this, it's going to be a positive for Franklinville. And I please hope you hear all the positivity that everyone's spoken about. I love you, Kit.
Swear to tell truth about testimony?
I do.
Name and address?
Daniel Thomas Fulpe, 12 Hillside Road, West Deptford, New Jersey. So just to give you guys a little bit of context of why I'm here, I know Billy, known him for years, I'm also a veteran, I was in the Marine Corps from 2004 to 2013. I was an infantryman, I got selected to go to Special Forces, 2nd Recon, and then was a foreign advisor. I did four deployments, two to Iraq, one to Afghanistan, and one on a classified mission. Point to all that is, when I was in Afghanistan, one of my main jobs was to train the Afghan police and Afghan army to go around and seek out cannabis farms, to burn them down, to right after the Taliban come and say, you now don't have an income, you work for us, you're going poppy. Okay, might be nothing, but then, when I got out of the Marines, I became a cop in Deptford, and I realized everybody was hooked on these opiates, that I just helped mass produce basically globally by allowing this to happen. So I did that for a while, and after about a year and a half, I realized I'm just arresting drug addicts that actually need help, and I'm taking their freedom, and I'm using case law to smell cannabis in their car, to get into their pockets, and get into searching them, and taking over their freedom. I didn't want to do that anymore. I sought out help from the VA, and guess what they offered me? Those same synthetic drugs that I was just arresting everybody for, and I didn't want anything to do with that. I went back to school, I figured out I wanted to learn something about psychology, because I have TBIs, I have PTSD, I have other injuries, but I wanted to learn, get my brain right, I'd get my body right. While I was there, I was the Student Veteran Organization President, and I realized how much veterans actually need help. I just thought we all kind of had it handled, we're going to figure it out in our own way. The number that we all like to spew, 22 a day of killing themselves, that's not counting Texas and California. It's actually closer to 50 plus a day that are killing themselves, which is 20,000, close to 20,000 a year. That's been going on for decades now, but we just can't handle what we did over there, what was done, whatever, everyone's got their own personal reason. But I realize we need help, and we need to start helping each other. I have my own personal story, one of my roommate squadmates put a shotgun in his mouth, killed himself, his seven-year-old sister found him. Imagine explaining to this little girl that, that's a hero, as a parent, you know, that's your hero, he's out there, he's fighting for you, he survived the war, couldn't survive reality afterwards, and she's the one that had to find him. And there's dozens of those stories, I'm sure everyone here knows a vet has a story like that, because there's so many killing themselves. Point to all that, just trying to give you a little context of, why do I even care about this? Cannabis helped me, alright, I was on that road to addiction that I had some problems, I needed to get off of it. Cannabis has helped me with chronic pain, with acute pain, it's an anti-inflammator, it helps with anti-depression, anti-anxiety, anything you can think of, it helps with when you use it properly. Why am I talking to you guys? We need you guys as the representatives to allow access. That's all we're basically asking for, is that, can you just allow us as veterans and everyone else to have access to a plant that is helpful, that we're not going to be addicted to, that's not going to end up being more crime-ridden down the road, have. Okay, let's not stop. Thank you.
I do. Dave Marshall, 67 New Road, Malaga. First, I just want to thank all the veterans that are in here. I've had many family members that were veterans, and myself would have been in the Air Force, except for my eyesight wouldn't allow it. I believe in what you do, and I thank you for all what you've done and what you've given for this country, it's grand, we appreciate it. That being said, I was born here in this township, I've lived in this township just shy of 50 years, it was a short span I was out, because I couldn't afford to live here when I first moved out. I love the township, I've spoken at many meetings about that, and the last thing I'm going to do is see this town go to pot. Just rather see it stay the way it is as rural as possible and keep normal farmland if we can. I understand the financial aspect of it, and it is a cash crop, it's a cash cow, if you want to look at it that way. Colorado was one of the forefronts of this in our country, and at that point in time, they were making a lot of money, hand over fist. Now there's one and a half facilities a week closing in Colorado, because they realize the market's on a downturn. It's fading out. We don't have that in this state, because we haven't got to that kind of production yet, but it's going to happen at some point. There's enough mass production going on that a lot of it isn't needed for the smaller side. But again, I understand his side of wanting to do this. A couple of things that were mentioned that I think are slightly inaccurate with some of the specifications and some of the odors. When you look at cannabis and how far it can travel, depending on what type of cannabis it is, and as he mentioned, there was many different types, five plants can travel 200 feet to 3/4 of a mile, depending on how the wind is blowing. That's five plants. Obviously, in a 10,000 square foot area, it's going to be a lot more than that. You have two sports complexes right down the street, one indoor, one outdoor, the outdoor one is all youth. And their prime time to play is when this is going to be flowering in that time period in the fall. Just something to think about, if your grandkids, kids are on that field, is what are they going to be smelling when they're out there playing on soccer? Just something to think about. Just something to think about. As for the water, cannabis is, is extreme consumer of water. Uh, it's not a lot less than tomatoes. It's actually five times worse than a tomato plant. One cannabis plant requires 5.8 gallons a day of water. Just to give you that, a little bit of context, tomato plants are a quarter to one gallon a day. Peppers are a quarter to half a gallon a week. So a huge difference in, in water quantity. So a garden hose isn't going to be able to water 10,000 square foot of cannabis. It's impossible. That being said, what happens when all that water, when they do get the water production up, where does the runoff go? That's the studies that are being done in these other states now of what's happening with the runoff and how that is affecting neighboring houses. Because there's a lot of water you got to flow through that it all doesn't go into ground. Something to think about on that side. The security was mentioned, if he does adhere to all that, obviously that's something on that side. Something that wasn't talked about was, and this is again, the studies that are going on now. They have found out that growing one ounce of cannabis indoors, now this is indoors, produces the same amount of greenhouse gases as burning seven to 16 gallons of gasoline. The outdoor study is actually coming out the end of next month. They think it's going to be less than that because then you have other air going around, but it's still going to be producing a lot of greenhouse gas emissions. It is one of the worst plants you can have for the environment. Thank you.
Back here's Sir.
Ralph Travoloni, 802 Marshmallow Road, Franklinville. The whole idea tonight is you're called the zoning board and we have zoning laws for reasons and we're all law-abiding citizens. And the state of New Jersey says marijuana can only be grown in an industrial zone, period. There was discussion about farmland and farmland preservation. In my wildest dreams, I would never accuse a .23 acre parcel as a farm. State of New Jersey states a farm has to be six acres to be a Q or qualified. Now, Mr. Pfeiffer's farm is indeed 18 acres, 5801, Lot 35. 2017, 2018, Mr. Pfeiffer came to this township Agriculture Advisory Committee to preserve his farm. State of New Jersey denied him.
Do you know why?
I know why. Something happened. Mr. Shiding and everyone here says this farm is zoned, uh, Pine Lands Rural Residential. According to the state of New Jersey, they say it's zoned Pine Lands Agriculture Production. We had a resident in the neighborhood of Mr. Pfeiffer who lived to his left, who applied to Pine Lands and changed it from PRR to PAP in 529 of 02. Our zoning maps indicate that it is PRR. State of New Jersey says it's PAP. Minimum lot size in Pine Lands Agriculture Production is 40.0 acres. Because of this, Mr. Pfeiffer had to go to the Pine Lands Commission and request a certificate of filing as well as an LOI, a letter of interpretation, to find out his Pine Lands credits. We never heard from him again. If, if, if a farm is zoned 40 acres, PDC's Pine Lands Development Credits were applied. Two other members in the township pushed an ordinance, 02101, to rezone Mr. Pfeiffer's farm from PRR to PAP. Now I don't have that document in front of me, but I'm going to tell everyone here, 02101, it was changed to PRR, Rural Residential, Minimum Lot Size, 40 Acres. And that's why Mr. Pfeiffer's farm was not preserved. Three minutes is up. Thank you.
Alana King, 585 Vassar Road, Winona, New Jersey. Elizabeth Will, 623 Vassar Road, Winona, New Jersey. I would just like to say I'm very proud of my dad and Uncle Billy for what they are doing and I would really appreciate if you could approve it because I want to learn how to, but, uh, because I want to just grow up in the country and like just be a country kid, I guess.
I do. Good evening. Uh, Jason Brant, 688 Rosemont Avenue. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm here this evening, uh, to speak on, not specific to this application, but these applications in general. Several of these have come before the board previously, as you know, and have been denied by this board, rightfully so. I wanted to just clarify a couple inaccuracies I heard put on the record this evening. The first being that commercial cannabis cultivation is recognized as agricultural use. That's factually incorrect. The state of New Jersey does not recognize commercial cannabis cultivation as agricultural use. Second, that the township somehow intended to permit this use, that also is not correct. The township had an opportunity, uh, to ban certain classes of cannabis cultivation. Uh, they did so with, uh, classes one through four, uh, and they chose to permit classes five and six, which are cultivation and manufacturing, uh, in the industrial zones within the township. That's the second, uh, point of clarification. The third is there was a statement that cannabis, commercial cannabis cultivation is recognized, uh, under the municipal land use law as inherently beneficial use. That is also accurately or factually incorrect. Um, I'm sure Mr. Shiding can list the, the uses which are recognized under the municipal land use law as inherently beneficial, um, some of them being hospitals, churches, things of the like, uh, but I do not believe unless there's been a change and you can confirm, uh, that, that commercial cannabis cultivation, uh, is one of those uses. So I'd just like to point out those, those three things. I would also caution the board, um, to be careful taking into consideration, uh, testimony, uh, by any individual, uh, which would be considered hearsay. Uh, there was some testimony this evening that certain township officials, uh, gave endorsements for this project. Um, without those, those officials here in order to cross-examine them, uh, I think that's highly inappropriate. So I would take that in consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do. Um, I just want to clarify a few things. My argument wasn't that New Jersey already recognizes cannabis as an inherently beneficial use. My argument is that it is an inherently beneficial use, even though it's not one of the ones that New Jersey officially has listed as automatically inherently beneficial. And the reasons obviously are what we discussed earlier, that it is, uh, used for medicinal purposes. It's used for therapeutic purposes. I mean, people have been using cannabis to treat not just military veterans treating post-traumatic stress disorder, but many conditions, Caesar, seizures, cancer. Everyone here knows somebody who used marijuana before it was officially legal, but the state has since made it legal. And my argument related to, uh, the ordinance that Franklin Township passed, and I think Mr. Brant has the numbers backwards. They had the ability at that point to restrict any of the six classes of cannabis at, at any area in the township was, I believe, how the ordinance specifically reads. In fact, I can, uh, pull it up if I need to. Now it does also reference that if they don't, then it is automatically a permitted use within industrial zones. So my point is at that point, they could have specifically restricted and said, we do not, we do not allow any cannabis operation, any of the six classes anywhere in the township. They could easily have done it and other townships have done it, but they chose not to do that. They chose to not restrict the first four classes of cannabis and class number one, the first one being the cultivation. They chose to restrict class five and six in every area of the township. So they don't want distribution or retail sale anywhere in the township. They did not choose to likewise restrict the other ones. So basically what it's saying is they had the opportunity to make it a, uh, I forget the exact word, prohibited use. They had the opportunity to make it an actual prohibited use and they chose not to do it. It only may, according, you know, to the argument to the township, it may only automatically make it a permitted use in industrial zones, but it indicates where the township was as far as what they were willing to permit in the township and what they were not willing to permit in the township. So that's just to clarify, nobody's attempting to mislead anyone. We're just simply making the argument that if, if it wasn't inherently beneficial, the state of New Jersey would have no reason to legalize it. Franklin Township would have no reason to say this isn't a prohibited use, uh, and it, it has a medicinal purpose. I mean, it was legal for, uh, medicinal purposes before it became legal for recreational purposes. So when we say a hospital is inherently beneficial, it's because it treats ill people. And basically a prescription medication is also treating someone's illness. Beyond that though, we talked about the benefits of, uh, maintaining the rural character of Franklin because nobody's professing that 10,000 square feet makes this a, a farm. What we're saying is that the same benefits that come from farming any other plant that isn't marijuana also come from farming marijuana and the, uh, cannabis, my bad. And the fact that this increased, uh, cash flow from this one small part of the farm allows the remainder of the farm to thrive and actually remain a farm is, is the whole point. If this property isn't eligible for farmland preservation, if, you know, and, and again, that's a whole different avenue that, uh, Mr. Pfeiffer will have to pursue because it sounded like something was really messed up at some point in the early 2000s, uh, related to zoning, if the state thinks it's one zone and the township thinks it's another. But I would argue that the township has the zoning map. So what the township says it is, is what it is. The state may have something else for the purposes of farmland preservation, but you know, Franklin Township owns the zoning map. Anyway, just to get back to it, the argument is it's inherently beneficial, but even if the board weren't to find it inherently beneficial, this particular property is uniquely situated for this, uh, opportunity, basically. Now you have, uh, you know, three people, three neighbors who've come out opposed to it. Um, you have Jason and Ralph who came out to point out technicalities that they disagree with. You know, I've sat here where there, the room has been full of angry people because, you know, there's a proposed, uh, cannabis, uh, manufacturing facility with, within a hundred feet or a couple hundred feet of a school, you know, or something like that. This is not that. You have a few neighbors who are afraid that it might smell is the long and short of it. Now, we've provided you with testimony as far as how they're going to mitigate the smell. They clearly are concerned with keeping the neighbors happy. I mean, he took the time to go around and talk to every neighbor to try to address their concerns. He is working with, as he testified, a professor from Stockton, I believe, uh, for the sole purpose of getting a handle statewide on scents of marijuana and how, you know, how they affect things. The point is, uh, this property is uniquely situated because it's not near a school. It's not near neighbors. It's a big open property where the wind will blow any proposed scent back towards the woods. Is it possible that there may be a faint scent of something here and there? Maybe. It's not, you know, to say that that's impossible, but there are additional steps that can be taken if it becomes a problem. I mean, in theory, uh, you know, Bill could go smoke cannabis at the corner of his property and the scent of marijuana could waft over to the school bus park there. I mean, it's, it's just very hypothetical and not based on an actual harm. It's based on, I would like not to maybe smell something for a couple of weeks at one point in the year, but probably not. I mean, and I get it. They, they have a right to feel that way. I'm not saying that they don't. I'm just saying that, uh, the benefits of this far outweigh any negative, but there is no negative to actually the goals of the township, the master plan, the zoning ordinance. You know, neighbors are allowed to say, I'd rather not live next to that, but that doesn't make it harmful, you know, to the township's purposes in zoning and things of that nature. So for all these reasons, I would ask that you grant the conditional use variance, the variance, uh, for the mixed use along with it. Uh, if, if we are able to get a waiver of the site plan, we would also ask for a variance of the eight-foot scent, uh, fence. And if not, you know, we would ask that, uh, if we, you know, come back for the site plan, we will ask for it at that point. Thank you very much.
I don't think anybody's disputing whether cannabis is a weapon. The feet certainly is, Elblon is, this is. And it is illegal, it is legal. What is it particularly suited from this case of fraud with that's the question? Yeah, if you heard the testimony, you got to call Sadi's. You had the collection, intellectual. No. That what I'm, I'm in agreement with a couple of things Mr. Brant said, man, and hearsay testimony, such as that the chief approves of it. And I think you can't really accept that as a given unless you had a letter or hadn't cured, probably, because you have about the security. Yeah. Emotion. It's up to him. This is nice. Hard to reach. Got to be tough. I'm going to make a motion. I'm quoting this. Don't know if I'm going to raise thing or not. Sure. My farm is big enough to support this. I have to do this a way that it doesn't affect it. I have the, yeah, man, we don't need a site plan. We need to know what's going where. Highway security is going to be set up. Can't go talk to yourself. Cover it, Mr. Mike? Um, main thing is a site plan, especially if the board works it through. Make sure there's a site plan, as well, the issues would have to be addressed. All right, so is a, what the motion to a pool? With, with the site plan, that would, uh, site plan, that have to wait for a site plan. The rights are a site. I'll second. Second slide. Mike Garfold, pushing by Richard Lacyus.
You're a sturdy town.
We both were voting on approval. On the, for that, but the approval that it is, yes, bets, I guess I be of it. But to go out site plan with the site, with site, ten, we're going to see the site plan again prior to, on the estimate.
Mr. Ketchum.
Now.
Mr. Gothawa.
Yes.
Mr. DeSousary.
No.
Mr. Iglesias.
Yes.
Chairman Rayman.
Yes. So, so to this, I, we're, I didn't, there was five observant votes, as votes, four of them is votes. Back.
Back to a site. This is a public understanding, you have to have five yes votes for you, even though it was four to three. Four, oh sorry, four to two.
Right. All right, uh, with Bill Moore's, some applications tonight, resolution, Mike?
Uh, yes. And just have the one for Colin Durgis.